I order our public hearing of the Wake County Board of Commissioners on Monday, May eleventh, two thousand and twenty at four sixteen P. M. Begin with a roll call vote of commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Pope, present, Commissioner Burce, Commissioner Burce, Commissioner Barnard, Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Carter. And the chairs pressed, okay? Let's stand, I'll do the prayer, and Commissioner Barnard will do the place of allegiance. And with the following, we just thank you, oh God, for another day, Lord, what a blessed day it's been, Lord. This world is troubled, and God threw you all troubles, Lord, come to them. And God, I thank you for the opportunity to serve you, Lord, as our Savior. God, we have a lot of sick and shut ins, Lord, you know the world, you know what the turmoil is in. God, we ask you to touch everybody that's sick, touch our employees, Lord, keep them all safe, over to departments, Lord, we just ask you to bless each department, Lord. We are so blessed to have good employees, and God, we ask you to protect them, Lord. And God, I thank you for this day, thank you for this meeting that we're about to start, and we love you for it, and we appreciate you so very much, God, and we love you, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
You want to pray?
I'm praying. The flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which this is one nation, and the people with their ten justices.
Okay, we'll get right into our short agenda. We only have this one item, well, actually two. First, we're gonna be rezoning twenty-one sixteen Carswell Avenue, R seventy-five residential to C two highway commercial. I'm gonna call on my planning and co-director to address the commission of this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is a request by Mr. Derek Robertson to rezone his property from R seventy-five.
I can't hear.
This is a request to rezone the property from R seventy-five to C two.
Can you hear that now, sir? Okay, all right, go ahead now.
What about now?
Here, James, all right now, Commissioners?
No, you.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Carter?
I'm very again.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jennifer, I'd like to have said your stuff up to the speaker, it kinda sounds like you know well, I think it's just the echo from the meeting far away.
Okay, what about now? Is this any better?
That's fine, we've got a dream.
Chairman, what if you moved over to another seat and let Jimbo sit back there and talk? Well, let him take you, somebody.
Yeah, I'm not that qualified with it anyway, I study it pretty well, uh, I really think it's a, uh, we have a position for it.
What about now, Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
All right, this is a request by Derek Robertson to rezone his property located at twenty-one sixteen Carswell Avenue from R seventy-five residential to C two highway commercial. He is the landowner, um, the size of the site is approximately one point seven five acres. To the adjacent and surrounding land use and zoning, to the north is vacant, R seventy-five residential, south is Carswell Avenue, Ocean Breeze Residential Development, R seventy-five residential, east is residential vacant, R seventy-five residential and C two highway commercial, and the west is residence church and R seventy-five residential. Uh, the major street plan shows this property is being located on a major, um, major street, which is Carswell Avenue. Uh, the future land use plan shows this property is designated urban fringe, which is a mixture of commercial residential uses. Um, the zoning history of the property has been zoned R seventy-five residential when the county adopted the official zoning map. R seventy-five residential allows site-built homes and Class A manufactured homes that are stated in the planning commission meeting, spot zoning is not a desired zone, or not a desired practice, however, it is not an illegal practice. And the applicant is requesting that the property be zoned C two highway commercial for the purpose of establishing a small cabinet trim shop located on the property. Attached to the map or to the staff report are the adopted rezoning standards, and, um, some of those standards would support rezoning, and some of those standards do not support rezoning. Also attached are the staff report or the maps, um, for the property, also the, uh, planning commission recommended denial for the purpose that it was rezoned, I mean, spot zoned. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak in support of this project? Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Derek Robertson, my property is being rezoned, address is, uh, twenty-nine-two Carswell Avenue, and I have a letter from the only neighbor that I have, Bobby Crooks, with approval to, uh, to rezon the land, to put a business right there.
Okay, y'all have any questions?
This will be a, a business cabinet shop, or is it, um, hobby?
It'll be, it'll be business.
So you'll have going and coming?
Uh, just one delivery, once a week, and every once in a while, we'll have a freight, but I'm just meeting them at the store, because the stores got that road, because I don't wanna tear up your yard anyway, with, with a semi going in and out, so.
What's that building you got, six door to back?
It's a, it's an old barn.
Not no house or anything?
No.
Do you live here?
Yes, sir, I live in the house, uh, if you're facing it to the right of it, on, right on the other side of the canal.
Yeah. And where does your neighbor live that's not opposed to you?
He lives to the left, in the double lock trailer, to the left, if you're facing it.
You got, you say you had something he signed?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Derek mentioned that, uh, we don't have a showroom, we don't, customers don't visit us.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're not gonna have a showroom, it's just gonna be, basically just warehouse where we build our stuff, and we, when we meet our customer, we go to them. It's not gonna be, you know, a bunch of traffic, you know, just us.
You build what kind of cabinets, kitchen cabinets?
Kitchen cabinets, commercial cabinets, anything.
What size building plan are you putting on?
We're thinking a thirty by sixty right now, and then I've got a, I've got one that's twenty by thirty that we already have, and that's our spray room, and I'm just gonna set that up, and it's gonna run, run through face power, all new power, and all that stuff.
And you do have access to county water and sewer there, too?
Yes, sir.
If second tank, is that what, some of that big mall or something?
Yes, sir, a second tank.
I figured that's what that is, and you gonna build, build it in front of that?
I'm gonna put it way back, about right in front of that barn, where you don't see that other barn from the road.
Oh, okay, so there's enough room there between the, the?
Yes, sir. The second tank and that old barn, yes, sir.
Is that, I don't remember, I was by there yesterday, I don't remember, can you see the barn from the Carswell?
Yes, sir. It's just the whole red barn.
What's the church called? Our church is, our church is? Where does this fit in the conference plan, is it?
Well, the conference plan now, um, designate areas around the city as urban fringe, um, so, which is usually a, uh, commercial mixed residential type, which they don't designate like they used to as far as residential, commercial, it's, it's more of a, around the edge of the city, it's a lot of urban fringe.
So it's right, I had let the conference plan in twenty years, but around the city, it's probably going to be commercial at some point, is us looking into the future.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, I've been wanting to find, I thought, I know the planning commission may, uh, wanted to deny this, it's called spot zoning, and, uh, I know spot zoning is down right there, maybe it's not that legal, but you know, it's, once you kinda let the D. M. talk on that, it's kinda keeps going on, and, uh, what I want to find out is even that, that this, uh, request was granted to Mr. Robertson, I believe it is?
Yes, sir.
Then, with, take the answer, if he sold, placed a move, it would, it would give someone if they wanted to come in there with something a little bit more, uh, longer than C two commercial zoning, they could put it in there, right?
Correct.
Okay, I, I guess that would mean that concern that I would have, that, you know, you know, I know maybe a cabinet shop, now a trim shop, and now, but, you know, in the future, once it's, uh, I mean, that was sold, placed, uh, whatever, there's someone coming there with, um, you know, heavy equipment shop that, that took a lot of years, C two zoning, I mean, commercial zoning. Oh, okay, that, that, that would be one, we'd go back on spot zoning, that, that, you know, once you do it, it's kinda, kinda hard, put the two things back in the tube, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, you've been here?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Commissioner Carter.
Uh, I, I know it's a bit funny to spot zoning, but I'm also, what they say for a small business, especially if a man can, can develop what he wants, and hire two or three people, and, uh, be running his house, where he can look after it from the top door. I, I tell you the truth, uh, under the circumstances, uh, I, I looked at this place, I go out and look at it, and, uh, I really, I have to have to go to the S. Court, of course, I think it was, uh, the spot something that was needed by this, uh, dispute, that we were pressing, and also the fact that it was with, uh, two or three people to work. So I, I'm not going to be happy in, in favor of it, only to come up with that.
Okay, uh, well, this ain't the time to vote, but, um, we'll have that opportunity at our, at our regular meeting. We'll have our vote at, in our five o'clock meeting, then we'll, you'll have the opportunity to vote.
Yeah, we'll take the next five o'clock.
That, that's, that's correct. Okay, anybody else wanna speak in favor of it? Anybody opposed? I don't see none.
Well, one I think, Mr. Chairman, uh, could be, what the, uh, planning commission, what remain of, James?
Yes, sir.
James, you should.
Yes, sir.
James, okay, as, as part of the planning commission, I guess you all looked at what is long like that, mine, what, R seventy-five, and, uh, is it pretty much making land surrounding that, or are that people purchasing homes, uh, building homes, or, or demo homes, or whatever?
There, there's been no development that I can recall, other than Mr. Robertson remodeling his house that he, that, when he purchased that right next door. Um, everything else has been there. The land behind this, this particular piece of property, um, is not very suitable for development, if I remember correctly, um, it would have to have a lot of field dirt and permits through E. P. D. or armed coroners and ears, um, but, um, the last development we had in that area is, uh, we had Ocean Breeze across the street, which was, I think, two thousand and sixteen, and then I think, um, they built some storage units on the corner of, um, Carswell and Augusta, which is probably six hundred feet, maybe, at the most from this place?
Yes, it's, it's a C. A.
I guess so, the, uh, the last year I've been, behind, uh, the planning commission that's minded is because based on the, uh, what is long right now, and, and maybe something that was called probably on that road?
Their, their sole base, um, their, their sole judgment was based on spot zoning, um, they didn't, um, they, they just said that they recommended now due to spots zoning.
Okay, of, uh, I mean, once we, if we, if we were to grant this, then, you know, the next individual that comes up, that's, got something similar, then would be our first initiative to deny it, wouldn't it?
Well, it, you, in, in certain cases, you have to look and see what, what's best use for the area, um, and this, this tract, you know, it has, um, uh, something that would support commercial, which would be, uh, a, a major street, which is required to have for commercial, um, you know, and I think Jennifer may can correct me, and she may know otherwise, but I, I, I think that the courts have ruled that based on spot zoning alone, it's not enough to deny a rezoning request, um, you have to look at more, more than, than just spot zoning. It used to be that spot zoning was, was just like absolutely not, but now they, um, you have to look at more, more areas, or outside the area of just spot zoning.
Then that's just right here, is, is that the only authority to be compared to, uh, be able to put that cabinet shop, that's gonna be like, uh, limited industrial, or somewhat, uh, unless, you know, there's involved, uh, zoning to C two, I'm much pretty much the highest zone you can give it to commercials, we do, right?
Well, no, sir, we have another one, which is C three, which is, um, um, this general commercial, which is the more of a, um, uh, for developments that don't fit light industrial, but are manufacturing some types of businesses, or some types of products.
Right.
So C three is our, is our most extensive, C two is, uh, what you call a highway commercial, which requires highway frontage, and then C one is neighborhood commercial, and, um, the neighborhood commercial doesn't permit, um, a cabinet shop.
Okay, so I have to ask, so the neighborhood, I mean, the C, or that the neighborhood commercial does not allow cabinet shops?
Correct.
Okay, but that's, so how to do C two and all to get a cabinet shop?
Right.
Uh, James, uh, did, did we have any opposition from the public or from the neighbors?
No one's called me in opposition.
Well, did anybody file any opposition, did you, uh, did we folks vote at the boards out there, on the side?
No, sir. I've had no opposition to, to the rezoning request.
Okay, okay, so, did you did have time, I don't?
Yes, sir.
Yes, been posted, it was properly posted. And the closest neighbor, uh, has given us a letter here, Commissioners, that, uh, says he's, well, he's, lives across the pim, so to speak, from.
And he will have to establish buffers around that zoning district, so he'll have to put a six-foot-high privacy fence, or either plant a vegetated buffer, that will be six feet high within five years.
Is the applicant aware of this?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't think nothing in that area would do nothing but enhance it, I mean, I live by there, too, since services, it's tall, so.
Yes, sir.
And the, the man that lives next door to you, that, that he felt about there, says it's, he's the closest.
He's the closest.
And, and you folks ought to arrest that property around there, so.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, y'all okay to put this on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Burce and Commissioner Carter, we gonna place this on the agenda for the five o'clock meeting, y'all okay with that? Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Burce?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, next item. Commissioner Manager?
Do you wanna cover this?
Yeah.
Second application?
The, the next item I have on the agenda is rezoning thirty-two thirty Smith Drive. But rezoning thirty-two thirty Smith Drive from L. I. Limited Industrial to G. I. General Industrial. Um, the planning commission met, and, um, on April fourteenth, recommended approval of the rezoning request, the applicant is Mr. Richard Lee, um, who requests the access change to Wake County official zoning map at thirty-two thirty Smith Drive from L. I. Limited Industrial to G. I. General Industrial, um, the property is located within the Wake Cross Wake County Industrial Park, uh, the purpose is to allow more, uh, more flexibility for the use of the property and use of properties, the waste recycling, reduction, transfer station, the size of the site is approximately five point eight acres, um, adjacent surrounding land use and zoning, to the north is vacant, bottom mass, G. I. Zoning District, to the south is Smith Drive, vacant, Wake County Animal Shelter, G. I. Zoning District, to the east is a tree service sawmill, uh, miners' sawmill in L. I. Zoning District, uh, west is vacant and G. I. Zoning District, um, major street plan is Smith Drive is a collector's street, collects all the traffic from Industrial Park, um, coming in and out of Industrial Park, um, the future land use plan shows this property designated as industrial, and that plan does not, um, differentiate between light and general industrial, um, zoning history, the best I can tell from research was the site was zoned L. I. Limited Industrial when the county adopted the official zoning map, um, the applicable regulations, L. I. Industrial, um, Limited Industrial allows light manufacturing uses, the G. I. Industrial, um, allows all industrial uses, um, a transfer station, waste recycling, uh, facility is not allowed in the L. I., um, Limited Industrial. Polutilities, the site will have polluted water and sewer, um, physical characteristics, size generally flat, development potential, the site is zoned L. I. Limited Industrial and could be developed with light manufacturing industrial uses, um, property is located within the Wake Cross Wake County Industrial Park, um, the applicant's requesting that the property be, be zoned from L. I. Limited Industrial to G. I. General Industrial use, if approved, and the applicant uses the property as a transfer station, applicant must establish buffers along proper line, and also would like to comment that the applicant would have to come back before the county commission and the planning commission to have approval as a conditional use, uh, transfer stations in the general industrial is required, is, uh, only approved as a conditional use. Attached to the staff report are the adopted rezoning standards, um, they would support rezoning the property from L. I. to G. I., um, it's, it's surrounded by, uh, on three sides by General Industrial, uh, also attached to your staff report are your maps, um, showing the area, and then, um, showing your zoning districts, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners, y'all got any, any comments?
Have we heard, has the development authority taken a stand on this?
Jenna has, Jenna has, I, and I have spoke virtually, um, we spoke before, I guess she knew what the whole reason was, um, so she's here now, she would have come on, so double, double thoughts on that.
The letters.
So the development authority did know all the details, you say?
That's what I understand.
They didn't know the transfer station when, when they were asked to approve this?
That's what I was told, that was, that transfer station was never mentioned, it was gonna be a area where it's gonna, uh, industrial, 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 you know, commercial, industrial. I see brother, please.
What'd he say?
Cannot hear, speaking. So, Mr. Chu, we're really looking at, all we're asked today is to rezon this piece of property.
Yes, sir.
With, in reality, it has supposedly nothing to do with the transfer station, they would have to come back.
That's right.
They would have to come back for a conditional use, approval.
And there are a lot of constraints, um, twenty-some years ago, you know, I, I can't, I can't tell you how bad it was in the landfill dealing with this stuff, um, and we put in place, um, performance points that any waste disposal company would have to meet, can y'all ever find that, see if it's still in operation, or?
I haven't, not found it.
Um, it's pretty strict, but I rezoned is one thing, the transfer station, no, I'll just put it on record, I'm opposed to it, in that area. We got one, it's, it's just, Mr. Lee, and it's, we've not known Mr. Lee forever, ran that operation over there, good, and it was, just can't ask for better, but, I have two, to me, is strain in the infrastructure, strain in the, the concept of industrial park.
Well, whenever, you wanna, you wanna address your side for the, the, the industrial development board, whenever, whenever you and our, and our attorney approach this?
Stand close so they can hear you.
Yes, ma'am, please, right there.
So, um, yeah, we
This is Jenna, Commissioners.
Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners and Jennifer, um, when this project was initially reached out to the development authority, we were under the assumption that it was gonna be for storage of roll-off containers, and it was gonna be a family-owned business, uh, in the, towards the end of last week, we learned that the application was in for a transfer station, and that we had some change in ownership, and neither one of those were the desires of the development authority board, um, we, we do not want another transfer station at the industrial park.
Everybody hear that, Commissioners? Here, here, here is the problem, right across the street is a company that makes student.
Not the transfer station at this point.
No, sir. No, sir. Right across the street, let's say if this was a transfer station, right across the street is a plant that works about two hundred people that make student. Now, if, if, if it was gonna be used for, for, for general construction debris and haul to another landfill, that's different from that, for, to, for garbage, and I, I just don't.
Okay, but right now, if, if right now, if the rezoning request is, we go to L. I. Limited to General Industrial, which will, that at some point, they want to get a transfer station, they have to come back, right?
That's a different, that's a different ballgame, yes, sir.
Right, okay, so, so, so whether the rezoning, whether they plan to do a district zoning right now?
It's, it's in order to prepare, it's in order to prepare to come back for a conditional use, um, uh, or if they didn't come back with a conditional use, they can use it for what they're using it for, which is to store their roll-offs, uh, because that's permitted in the L. I., and the, and the G. I. commits all uses in the L. I.
But not for sanitation, but not for sanitation. Correct.
Right.
Did we ask Mr. Lee to come up and explain to us what his intentions are? Richard, you gonna come up and explain to the commission? Come stand right here.
Yeah, Richard.
Brother Richard can hear you.
Well, yeah, we were just trying to
So, yeah, we were just trying to get that, actually get it rezoned for the transfer station. I understand this is one step, and then there'll be another step later. So we'll have to come back and ask for that, but if we could get this approved today, like James said, is we can operate what we're doing now either way with under L I or G I. But that's what we're asking for, and eventually, we would like, and I know there's another transfer station. You know, we recently got city wake rolls, and there would be garbage coming in there. There is a, there is a place they make food across the road. Near the other one, there's a sheriff's office, there's a lot of things closed there, too. And if you follow the E P D's rule, their permit by rule is what you have to have, permit by rule. There's seven rules you gotta follow, which is the same thing with the public. E P D governs that pretty close. If you follow those rules, it wouldn't be a problem, wouldn't be a nuisance, it wouldn't be a smell or odor problem. And like I say, the sheriff's office is, what, a hundred yards away?
Can I ask who would be making an application for the transfer station? Is it a company Dublin that's taking over the city wake rolls?
Probably so. Well, we've been on the property, they would lease it. I would be the figurehead for routing, probably I'm gonna run this area for routing. I would come back and ask the commission to do this. Under the, you have to have the understanding that E P D rules have to be followed, you know, the seven permit by rule.
Mr. Chairman.
I think, well, first thing we need, we need to decide on if we're gonna rezon this property. And then the transfer station, that's a different ballgame.
That's a great, that's a whole different question, yeah. Because you have to get permission, a conditional use permit from you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of probably holding out the one station like we've got it. At the same time, we must make some kind of arrangements that we're not locked in to one company, and that we have competition out there. Be able to have competition. If that's, I don't favor than one company being able to control our weight.
So multiple companies can currently come in, as it is. Mr. Carter, is that you that was saying that, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, so the agreement with Republic Service is not a restrictive agreement, it's one that multiple users can come in. The only concern of the development authority is that, A, we were not aware that a transfer station was gonna be requested from the word go. We were not informed that that was the intention. We were told that it was for the roll-off, so we were okay with that.
That's what we learned.
As it has progressed, we found out that it was requested use for the transfer station. That transfer station is not required for other users to be able to service our community. We were also under the understanding that it was gonna be under a local company, and that Mr. Richard Lee was gonna be owning that company. We have since learned that that company has been purchased by the company out of Dublin and is no longer owned here locally. So, from the beginning, the authority is just concerned that we didn't receive the information that was needed to be able to make a decision, and our recommendation, this has kind of evolved. And that transfer station being less than a thousand feet from a food processing facility, right across the street from your animal control facility, and right across the street from two sites we're trying to market to stay, and we've been doing improvements on, we put a blight on those properties.
I see, I understand. Well, I'm not against controlling the down to one transfer station as long as we make it, so that we can get other people to be able to bid on the use of that transfer station.
I don't think, the question is having another transfer station. I mean, as Jenna said, it was set up, it's not exclusive to any one company. They put a transfer station, they put it out at the old landfill that the city owns. It's not, it's the, it's the location and the industrial park in prime profit, that's the question to me.
Yeah, I agree, Ben, and I just, I'm not in favor of trying to keep down any local transfer stations, but I wanna make a competitive whatever we got.
And we agree from that standpoint, Commissioner Carter. We're not trying to make it where it's not where others can do business. The concern is just knowing upfront what was going to happen, and knowing the location is considered to some of the other businesses that they're close by.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you said
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we think we'll decide until we find, I find out who's decided.
We got two things here. We got to decide where we're gonna rezon the property or not. And then we got the industrial development board, and this commission's gonna have to come back, and both agree that that's what we want to do, am I correct?
So with the current, I mean, they can do what's already being done at their facility, it's not understanding. So they're not going out of business.
Yeah, that's Yeah, that's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that if we leave the zoning right at this now, they can do what they want to do with the roll-offs or whatever over there.
That's right.
The only person, my understanding is that for the rezoning is to pretty much get the process started to work toward a transfer station.
Well, that's, that was called for a different rezoning, other song, correct?
Right, that's what
Conditional use. We would have to make
Yeah, so if you left it like it is now, if you left it like it is now, they can still do what they want to do with the roll-offs, and then if they
That's right.
Decide to start to get a transfer station, they would have to come back and try to get rezoned with they don't want to hear right now, if we're not in favor of that.
That's right, that's correct. So they have to make a decision where they want to do that or not.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, the one reason we would look for a transfer station is to have more fair rates in this area. If they would give us the fair rates, then we wouldn't have to do, even ask this question. Yeah, they wouldn't give us an account for rates extremely high to us and to everybody else in this area. We need to fare the rates significantly better.
You don't talk about sanitation.
I know the teeth can be, because I haul a ton of garbage into them, what they charge them for. That's probably twenty dollars a ton higher than you.
We'll be glad to help you find another site, but we definitely do not want a transfer station at that location.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think we had that factor, because it did evolve, like you just said. But when I went to the planning commission, I did make them aware of what I had planned.
And I didn't know about it until the day after I saw the placement.
That's right.
See, because I serve on the industrial development board, and
The W W E A?
We was presented, we was presented that it was a station to, for all for roll-offs. There was nothing ever mentioned about the transfer station.
Yeah, I think you called me asking questions, I didn't answer what.
So we got two, we got two issues here. We got two issues. It's either we either rezon the property as we got it here, and then come back at a later date with another, through the industrial development and to the county commission.
They'll have to come back and file for
That's right.
If you don't give us the first step, then the second type of questions, we can't even argue that ever. But if you give us the first step, then we can come back and, well, I do think the rates are unfairly, they're unfairly high. They are.
But they said
That's their choice, they said, they raised them at
We got some That's what we wanted, that's true.
The rates are, could be twenty dollars a time.
They, they still have the property, for the rent update would be soon before what you want.
The title is wrong, I mean, it has to be here?
Does it have to be here once you own it?
Well, that's where we own it. I mean, we don't own anywhere else, so if y'all can find us something, we do own this, so.
So they purchased that in March, Mr. Chairman. It's about five acres, this site is five acres, and it's next to the site that the development authority owns.
So did you not tell us at the board meeting that they were gonna buy more?
The three acres, the two point nine whatever that's right next to it, that's under the development authority ownership, they are looking at purchasing that site as well, we're under negotiations on that.
You okay buying about ten acres to trade that property for?
We'll be willing to look and see. Again, the main concern is, we just do not care to have that transfer station in the industrial park. I don't know what took place prior to us coming on board, but the location of it is just not desirable for another transfer station.
And why is that? Well, that's not even the issue this week, or not concerned, but that would be the next week.
Right.
If we could get the first step, then that would give us, and then you can always deny it next time. But first, if you don't approve this today, we can't go, can't ever go beyond that.
How far is the date decided for you to have your roll-off here?
No, sir, I think so.
You can currently have him away.
I think we're fine with what we're doing right now.
That continues on?
They can continue on, but it also, if you approve this today, does not mean that you have to approve the next step. And if you do have another piece of property to trade out somewhere, it doesn't need to be five miles away, but the piece of first have a transfer station in the park.
It would definitely be outside the industrial park, because we are trying to make it more manufacturing and those type of facilities.
That's important, what
It's been two years, and I put all my slack, we got to have jobs, we got to have jobs, we got to have jobs. And that's what we're trying to build towards, and our building board, she just told us in our meeting, we got eight industry projects right now. And we certainly don't want them to have for that.
Yeah, I know the transfer station sound good, and actually, if you manage it right, if, or maybe by rules we follow, E P D rules, you'll be okay, but if you live as nice as you want to live, I don't think that argument is today, really.
We'll place this on the agenda, though. We rezoned the property, we have the next step, we can come back at a later date and say this, we won't put them out there in a year and a half.
That's the process, you had her to vote to rezon.
That's right.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, what we do today is, are we gonna, are we gonna vote to rezon?
Then if they want to come back and try to get a transfer
Yes, that's right.
Well, we can ask for a conditional use, don't sound like we'll get it, but we could ask for it. I think this is further away from the airport, and further away than anybody else, but maybe a thousand, a hundred, a few, whatever.
Same thing happened to Namco out there. We got a nicest letter from the Federal Aviation Administration, said that that side out there, you can never put a landfill out there, because whenever we, and I ran the airport for maybe nine while I retired, you can never put that landfill out there. Say there's, whenever we load, put six thousand feet on that main runway, that loaded mountain was into the airports, about two hundred fifty foot, so that's putting that landfill out there on double ride inside that mountain. So we got a nicest letter from the Aviation Administration, says you can't, you can't open that landfill.
What about that old landfill, is that possible to trade back?
We bought it, yeah.
That old landfill? This way, I bring landfill, what is that?
That's where the Santa Teresa is.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, couldn't put a landfill there.
Yeah, transfer station we do.
If it, if it just for roll-offs, you know, that, it could be a range, you know, on that landfill, the trailer center property, three hundred fifty feet, the Wake County property. That's, that's
That's another thing.
All right, Commissioners, y'all okay with putting this on the agenda?
Not well, on those things.
Commissioner Burris and Carter, y'all okay with putting this on the agenda to change this?
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda, I think.
All right.
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we're gonna need them to hang up, because we gotta open the lines back up.
Yeah. If you, I don't know if you want to close this meeting, and then we'll take care of that part.
We go, Commissioners, Larry gonna close this meeting, this zoning hearing out, they'll have a motion to adjourn.
Go move the chair.
Okay. Here, Commissioner Pope first, I got a second. All in favor of my saying hi? Okay, we adjourned the work session for just a very short time, and then we'll get right into our meeting.